Notice. This license place anyone it was taking action on the matter is to blow every effort to make sure that the public can adequately access the proceeding in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, a matter is not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the city assailants website and audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public under parties with the right and your requirement to attend this meeting may access their remote participation meeting through one of the following ways. Please click on the link posted in the agenda to join the meeting. Go to the website link HTTPS slash slash zoom.us slash join and enter webinar ID number eight three six nine zero four three one thousand followed by the meeting password seven two eight three two two. By telephone participants can dial a toll free phone number at eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine to join the meeting when prompted. Enter the webinar ID noted before and follow the instructions to join the meeting. Um, City Council Committee on Ordnance and Legal Affairs will meet remotely on Zoom Thursday, January twenty sixth at seven PM for the purposes of discussing the waterfront industry overlay district zoning ordinance amendment and the zoning ordinance amending buffer zones relative to marijuana establishments. For the notice of this meeting was posted on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty two at eight nineteen AM. This meeting recorded. In attendance are all members of the committee. Thank you. Plus, councilors of the whole, councillor Merkel, councillor McCarthy, I want to say councillor Terrell, councillor Hathaway, councillor McLean, councillor Watson felt and councillor Mercillia. We also have joining with us former councillor Josh Turiel. We have from the city of Salem, the city solicitor Beth Renard and the city director of planning, Tom Daniel. Thank you, everyone, for joining tonight. Oh, councillor McCarthy, did I miss someone?
No, you're doing a great job. But may make one suggestion not being a member of the committee.
Sure.
Uh, that you take up the second matter first because I think that's relatively quick and self explanatory rather than get into a big discussion on the first matter, then kind of have to take that up after the fact. I might want to dispose of that right now. I mean, that's just a matter of, I can give, bring you the brief history. It's basically we adopted rules when we had put that zoning amendment in place that were contradictory to the states and we did it knowingly or the votes were there knowingly to do it, but we're just trying to housekeep it and keep it straighten it out. So that one seems more, that's, that one seems quicker to me, but it's not my committee and I'll leave that to your discretion. But it's just a friendly suggestion.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Yeah. So I just wanted to set the stage for this evening. We do have those two items in front of us. We have the waterfront industrial overlay district zoning ordinance amendment. And then we have the second item, which is the zoning ordinance amending buffer zones relative to marijuana establishments with councillor McCarthy just mentioned. We do, I do anticipate a lot of discussion on the waterfront industrial, the YOD, I'm going to call it, um, item. So that conversation, I think, is why the majority of the people are here this evening, why the public is probably here. So I was thinking of seeking that one up first because that's the one that everyone is probably the most interested in. And then you're absolutely right. The I'm hoping that we will quickly be able to end on the marijuana one afterwards. So we don't have to jump into that one quite yet. So, um, did I see another hand raised? Councillor Cohen?
Uh, thank you, Chair Ricardi. I am actually in agreement with councillor McCarthy and I move that we switch the order.
Okay. I have no problem with that. So we can switch the order. Does somebody want a second, Pat?
A second.
Okay. So the second order that we have on the agenda this evening, the zoning ordinance amending buffer zones relative to marijuana establishments is councillor McCarthy did mention earlier, this was put in for a few years ago for the, the new zoning, um, but are the new zoning amendments when we took out marijuana establishments in the city of Salem. There were some edits above and beyond what the state law listed that we're looking to, it looks like that's what the request was looking to adjust those. There was a request at the January thirteenth, the city council meeting for a joint public hearing that essentially needs to go to a joint public hearing or the joint public hearing needs to be scheduled in the next fourteen days once that's announced within council. So we do need to have this back in front of council. Um, and then at the joint public hearing, we can continue, you know, obviously the conversations around the zoning amendment request and have any other additional amendments here. This was brought to committee though, because there were some questions and we wanted to verify that if the reasoning for the change and if there were any other changes that needed to be made before it went to joint public hearing. And I believe that was councillor McLean that had those concerns. So, um, my understanding is that those were answered, but I also want to open it up to the floor to see if there are any still outstanding questions or concerns around that amendment. Anyone on the committee have any questions or concerns? Anyone on the committee have a motion? This will have to go back to council for tomorrow evening. We can vote it to, from the committee, we can vote it to just go back to council with no amendments. We can vote it to committee to go back for the recommendation of a joint public hearing. We can, I don't think we can make many amendments here. The amendments will be made in the joint public hearing. Councillor Cohen?
I move that we refer back to the full council for tomorrow's meeting.
A second.
With the recommendation for a joint public hearing?
Yes, please.
Councillor, sorry, councillor Cohen moves to refer back to council. Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councillor Presnisky?
Yes.
And my councillor Verella?
Yes.
And myself, is it yes? So I have nothing that will go back to council with the recommendation um, for, to refer the matter to a joint public hearing with their planning board, or for the matter to the planning board for joint public hearing. Okay. Second item on the agenda this evening is the waterfront industrial overlay district zoning ordinance amendment. So requested this be sent to committee. I think we were all a little surprised on the timeline of that here, coming back in our first meeting in January. And we do have um, quite a new few members on the council that were not here last year during the joint public hearing. So I think there were probably still a lot of outstanding questions and not everyone was a hundred percent concrete on what they wanted to do, or I know I myself wasn't and wanted that, you know, extra time to have conversations and do some more research on my own ends and to provide one more opportunity to have us get together and ask any questions that we might have. Um, and also to bring former councillor Turiel back here to, to provide any insight as well as the city solicitor and Tom Daniel. Um, so with that, I will open it up to the committee to, to kick off with any questions or concerns that we might have that we would like to discuss here. Who want to go first? I guess I, let me, I can do a quick recap too before we dive into it. So the matter in front of the council last on the thirteenth came with the planning board um, recommendation to not um, adopt the, I'm pulling it up, I'm sorry. So I don't read it incorrectly. So the planning board voted eight in favor and one abstentation and zero opposed to recommend that the city council not adopt the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. So that was the first matter that was in, in front of us last week. And then the amendment itself is um, for section one, chapter eight point six waterfront industrial overlay district of the city of Salem zoning ordinance is hereby amended by adding a new table entry um, of the planned housing unit development of a no. So essentially changing the, the yes to a, or adding the no on top of the industrial. Does anyone have any questions about the two items that are in front of us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think for the benefit of the, the new councillors, maybe um, former councillor, um, Turiel can just give an overview of, of um, the history of how this all came um, to tonight's meeting. I'm sure that he can do that um, pretty eloquently and briefly.
Sure, that would be great. Councillor Turiel?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Not having a reputation for brevity, I'll do my best. So, um, Prime Storage bought Shetland Park a couple of years ago and filed, kind of catching everybody by surprise last spring, a prospective plan with the state to develop approximately fifteen hundred residential units on the property. Um, there was predictably, there was outrage from the administration and from most of the city councillors at the time. Um, faced with that, they withdrew their plans but did not really kind of in, and did do some work on trying to engage with some people in the neighborhood and, and the like, but didn't really bring the city into the process. So, under our current laws, um, we have basically one tool by which a residential construction can be done in an industrial zone because that's not normally permitted use. And that's through a planned unit development, um, which I won't go into all the things that planned unit development brings to the table, but it can apply to multiple parcels that have different zoning attached to the parcels. It can apply in industrial zones. Um, the city solicitor knows this stuff backwards and forwards far better than I ever would. But it's a tool by which mixed use can be done in zones that otherwise might not allow it. Um, there've been a number of projects done under PUDs here in Salem. In fact, um, for one that wasn't residential, the CVS on Canal Street was done with it using a PUD and that redevelopment. So, um, for a smaller scale one. So that's a fairly common tool. Um, but in the meantime, the largest industrial site in the largest two industrial sites in the city are Shetland Park and at this point and Footprint. Now those two zones are also on the waterfront and industrial zone. There's other things overriding um, some of the options that would exist at Footprint and now they have a plan going forward that remains industrial in nature. But a use was a special overlay zone was created that could apply to zones like Footprint and Shetland. Um, and that's called the waterfront industrial overlay zone or YOD. The YOD brings in a number of additional permitted uses that normally would not be allowed in a industrial zone. And they did that in order to help make sure Shetland could be competitive with other office parks like um, like Cummings over in Beverly, for instance, or some of the other ones that you have. So uses like a daycare, which normally would not be permitted in an industrial zone are allowed in the YOD. And so as it's currently implemented, the YOD only applies to Shetland, but it could apply to additional zones that meet the acreage and waterfront criteria. Um, but a overlay zone can be additive, can add uses, it can also remove uses. So given that the only potential use, the only potential way that a residential complex could be built in industrial zone is through the PUD, um, and given the constraints at the time, the best way to go forward on this was to rewrite the waterfront industrial overlay zone, which overrides the underlying zoning by adding or subtracting uses and remove PUD as an accepted use. That at this point, if we implement it as is, would eliminate the ability to build anything residential unless further zoning was done or a potentially maybe, I don't know to this one, but maybe a friendly forty B use or where the city was partnering it. I'm not sure on that. But that unless we were to come up with a, another um, tool that applied to the YOD at that point, that would preclude residential construction. The problem to me at the, when this first occurred last year and I'm talking about it with councillor McCarthy and some of the other members to try and come up with an idea here was, we want the city to be able to end, and frankly, the city and the elected leadership of the city, meaning the administration and the city council, to be able to come up with the parameters of what would be acceptable for residential redevelopment at a site like Shetland and not have it simply be a permitting board issue. Without this passed, then Shetland has the ability tomorrow if they wanted to, if they had something ready to file, they could file something tomorrow under existing PUD rules and there would be no breaks that the city, that the elected part of the city could apply to it. And the planning board at that point and any other, uh, any other permitting bodies involved are much more constrained as to what they can and cannot allow at that point. So my hopes would be, and we, this could be part of the discussion here, my hopes would be to see this zoning change passed and then the city council, um, I honestly, I didn't think it would take so long. I thought we'd be on to this already last year while I was still there. But um, the city council work kind of going forward to come up with what is acceptable and hopefully engage with Prime Storage, the owners of Shetland, to come up with something that's acceptable to everybody that could then be written into zoning law. Um, that's the ultimate goal. But using the tools of PUD gives them, I, I feel strongly, far too much leverage and far too much ability to make changes on their own. And also, and the other issue with Shetland there is it's a commercial and industrial use that it provides jobs, it provides commercial taxes. Um, it provides a lot of jobs to people who live in that neighborhood. And those are really, really important issues at my, to me. Um, you know, there's a large bake commercial bakery that employs a lot of people in the neighborhood. The Salem pantry has facilities there. The triangle has facilities there. There's a gym there. The people, nobody's in council chambers today, but the furniture that's in the council chambers that was all restored last year was restored in that building. So, because that's where the artisans have space that they can do work. They have warehouse space there. So it's, it's valuable to the city and it provides jobs. So to be able to take that and just cut it away to turn it into residential just doesn't seem like good policy. Thanks. Hopefully that wasn't too bad.
No, no, very good. And I'll ask um, others to provide a, a, a short synopsis as well as to where we stand with the current process with um, the developer. But if anyone has any questions for Josh before we move to um, Tom? Tom, do you mind going, going next to provide a synopsis of where we are now with the, um, the, the city's communication regarding the project?
Sure. I'm happy to pick that up, Madam Chair. So, uh, you know, just building from the timeline that councillor Turiel laid out, um, you know, the, the owner, I'll just refer to the ownership group, we just call it Shetland. So Shetland did um, try and do some, uh, some engagement, uh, I think early in the summer with some folks and um, and then things, uh, things kind of went quiet. The mayor had sort of posited the idea of you know, what if the city led a planning process here funded by Shetland but city, city led. And so, um, you know, that's something that the, the Shetland folks agree to. And then, um, I started working with developing a scope, working with a consulting firm, Sasaki, who's, who's been, uh, done a number of different planning studies in Salem for both the city and Salem State. And so this fall, we, we worked through the scope development and then with Shetland and their consultant teams sort of revise that because there was, um, you know, a lot of work that the Shetlands consultants had done in terms of baseline analysis, you know, the drawings for the, the site, the, the square footages, the tendency mix, um, you know, where the chapter ninety one jurisdiction is, you know, all of that data. So what's, what's great is that, um, the Shetland team is able to provide all that data to, um, to the city's team. And so, um, we've worked, we've got a scope in place. Um, we, uh, the, the idea here is that we would start a community planning process is probably going to run six, six to seven months. Um, there'd be, you know, community meetings and working group and focus groups and, you know, outreach is kind of, you know, typical to what we, we do. Um, the work would be managed and led by the city and our consultants, Sasaki, but paid for by Shetland, um, with the goal at the end of that process to have a shared vision that, you know, community members are bringing forward, um, things that they need and want to see, you know, the property owners being forward things that they need and that they want to see. And we look, um, look how to come up with something that, um, people can be supportive of love. And then that sets the, uh, the framework for subsequent regulatory changes. It would provide that, um, that vision and analysis. And then there's, there would be a host of more work that the, um, the owner would need to do, you know, additional studies and, um, and then the zoning itself and whatever other regulatory infrastructure needs would, would flow from that process. So, um, uh, we started meeting regularly. Uh, we walked the site, the, both teams walked the site earlier this month. Uh, we started the data transfer, got a uh, online portal for the data to be transferred. So we've got a shared workspace. Um, you know, we're talking about an initial meeting with the ownership's CEO and the mayor coming up in February. Um, so that, that work has started to, to form. Happy to take any questions that folks may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so there's, there's a whole lot of questions in my mind. Um, I, I do want to start by saying that I can't help but feel that we're, that we're taking this vote or we're contemplating a vote, which is a reactionary zoning change. And that bothers me. Um, we're reacting to a plan that we didn't like or work that was going on without the city's knowledge. And I get that. And I get that this was a good way to get people to the table. Um, but since, so it, it just brings up a lot of questions. And one of them is this argument that if we remove the ability to create a PUD, then there may be this chance that they could create a friendly forty B. Is that true? Is that correct? Can they do that?
I'm asking either Tom or Beth to help out here.
Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were already over on the percentage. I don't know if that is in fact permissible. Do you know?
It, it would have to be a friendly forty B. So that would have to be done in, with support of the city, uh, because we're over, we're over the ten percent. So.
So, so if it's done with support of the city, then they, then they still have this ability to create housing. Do we lose any other, um, any other approvals moving forward with a friendly forty B that we wouldn't have otherwise or that we would have otherwise, I guess, would, would they have to get the same permits like from the planning board or, or whatever other boards in the city?
Um, so under a forty B process, the, the zoning board of appeals is the permitting authority. And so, um, uh, which is not, you know, in Salem, the planning board is, is the site plan and review entity and special permit authority for PUDs and others. Um, so the, um, so it would function differently. The way we would operate is having the other, because it's a friendly forty B and so we're, you know, at the table. Um, you know, we would, our expectation would be that the applicant would still be appearing before relevant boards like the planning board. Um, the planning board process would feed into the zoning board. So it would procedurally look different, but we would manage it towards having similar review. But, but to put a fine point on it, it's a, it's a permit from the zoning board of appeals. Um, they do still need to comply with the Wellness Protection Act uh, through the COMCOM.
Councillor Turiel? Where'd you go? You're still on mute. You missed a thing.
Sorry, I haven't done this in a while. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Not being a member of any of the committees, um, I would, uh, say that the big difference to me between a, between having PUD as a tool and having friendly forty B is that in a friendly forty B, the applicant is going to need the support of the city government in order to bring that across and particularly administration, uh, because that has to be supported as opposed to thought when, whereas with a PUD, it can be filed by right. So to me, that would be the biggest difference in that kind of condition. Um, Shetland would have to work with the city to come up with a plan that the city government felt was acceptable before they could take that step of going to the zoning board of appeals and then go through side plan review. Whereas with a, uh, the PUD process, they just simply have to file, um, for that with plan where they don't need anybody's approval in order to go ahead with it. Thank you.
Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, you know, whether, uh, former councillorial's, uh, you know, ordinance or amendment was reactionary or not, I think that there's been a lot of discussion. This has been in front of the city council for ninety days and yet the most intense lobbying I've received on anything in my life has happened in the last two hours. And I think what's really important is the misconception that if an amendment like this passes, it would eliminate housing. I think that a friendly forty B could enable, for example, workforce housing, a higher percentage of affordable housing, uh, and enabling to have, uh, the kind of commercial space that a lot of people are afraid would be missing. So, you know, however this started, I believe that we may be in a place that the process that, uh, Tom Daniel was referring to, uh, would still be in place and still be viable. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the committee or the committee of the whole? Councillor Merkel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, especially not, uh, being a member of the committee. I was wondering, uh, with the PUDs, uh, what limits, uh, there might be on residential housing that's allowed? You know, size, numbers, are, are there restrictions with a PUD?
Um, Tom, are you able to answer that?
Sure. So the, the, the PUD is a special permit under the planning board. And so um, it, it allows the planning board to look at the, the proposed project in its totality. And it's looking at the, the mixture of uses and the adequacy of, you know, the facilities, the, the circulation, the parking, the infrastructure. There's no specific limitation on numbers of units. Um, it's looking at, you know, the totality of the projects was being proposed. Is there adequate open space? Um, there's a series of criteria that the planning board evaluates on it. The, um, the PUD allows for flexibility in terms of dimensional standards with the exception of height. So the, the, um, the height standard, which is forty five feet for the industrial zone, that cannot be, um, modified through the, the planning board, uh, special permit process. The only way to change that is through a zoning board of appeal. through a zoning board of appeals variance request. But otherwise, the number of units and the mix is is site driven and and evaluated for the interaction of the uses on the site.
Any other members in Council McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not being a member of the committee. Let me say, I'm actually, I'm encouraged that the owners, the new owners of Shetland want to come to the table now. I think, as was stated, I think that, I mean, I've seen the owners of Shetland at multiple point neighborhood meetings talking generalities, conceptual ideas. I think that consolatorial statement that when the when they filed with the state filing through the state, which that's my, going to be my follow up question to Tom is that that specific filing. They filed the state and they were looking for up to fourteen hundred units. I think that threw us all for a loop. I think my first call the next day was to the mayor. It was very early. She said the same thing. And then by noon, they had withdrawn their application to the state. I think they they just thought that that was the thing they needed to do because that process from what I'm hearing can take up to two years. And so that was, they felt like that was, they need, that's where they needed to get the ball rolling. I think that the city has lots of tools in the toolbox with regards to development. I think that the difference between this site and the power plant site at night and day with regards to the power plant site has an additional restriction on it, which would be a DPA, which is deep port area, which is more restrictive with regards to different types of usage, which even limits them more. So I don't, I I worry about what's term sometimes this term that's thrown around sometimes is spot zoning and reverse, I guess, in this case. I think that's it's a consideration, but at the same time, I'm also very encouraged the fact that for the first time the new owners want to come to the table and have a discussion. And I would just feel like that if I could hear from Tom, what the belts and suspenders are about those discussions and with regards to I know they've agreed for the study, but if they, you know, counsel, the former consolatorial alludes to the fact that, you know, we don't vote on this thing come Monday when it's after everything's supposed to be filed through the administration is they're going to run down and file, make a filing with some sort of development. And there's nothing we can do. Could you just address, first of all, the state filing? I'm encouraged that they want to come to the table. I think that's important. I think that we need to have they need to be at the table, they need to have discussions that we've alluded to some of the things, but I think that, you know, we need to, we need to be, we need to understand, they need to understand that, you know, those, that area needs to be a business incubator, it needs to be, needs to have businesses that support the community and it's actually support the neighborhood. And now they're going to continue to do that. And at the same time is if they do have some sort of vision as to what types of alternative uses, I mean, I don't even, I don't even know what their, you know, they're on, what their occupancy rate is. You know, are they looking to shift their businesses around to reaccommodate them and then provide an area that will allow them higher occupancy and and also provide some sort of housing options that would then supplement and benefit the neighborhood. I, we haven't had those discussions because we haven't heard anything. So I think it's important to understand where we stay, where they stand with us and where we stand with them as we look to move forward before we make a decision on. I mean, I I don't, I don't like making zoning changes willy nilly. And I don't, it's not willy nilly. It's just that they, you know, you know, I don't like the idea of someone saying, well, we make the zone change this week. And then six months from now, we'll just change it back if they come up with a plan. We like it. That's not the way I I just don't envision doing. That's not the way we should be acting as councils. I think we should be taking, you know, it's zoning changes, zoning changes, they basically, someone came to me once and said, oh, my neighbor wants wants to waive so that we can make their property into a two family. It's a zone, it's an R1 because they have they have two relatives and they want, one relative wants to live on the first floor, one wants to live on the second floor, blah, blah. And I said, okay, that's fine. But what happens when they, when they move? And I said, what do you mean? Like if they leave, it just, you mean, you're, you're doing it because they're nice people. And they've been living there and they want each to have their own place, but they decide to sell the zoning, the zoning goes, the the zoning goes with the property. So it's a two family forever now. So you, before you make the ask, you better realize what the ask is because zoning isn't something we gets changed very easily, as we've all seen over the past bunch of years. It's a very difficult decision. And because zoning is impactful just for the neighbors, but for the city as a whole. So I would be be more encouraged to hear what kind of commitments from, we're hearing from Shetland as to the process and where they're gonna, how they're gonna, how they may proceed down the road with or without this change.
Sure, through Madam Chair, I I think the I think the Shetland team recognizes that you know, this, they had gone through a process, but then that filing with the state, I think, kind of derailed things because it was unexpected and there was the the housing component that was put in that filing was not something that had been part of the conversations that they had had with with various community groups. So I think they they see the value and the need really to go through the process to build that trust with the community, with the city and see how you know, the 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 goals that they have as owners, you know, can also advance goals that the community has. And so it's been, you know, what I I I, Council McCarthy, you listed a lot of questions in there in terms of what they're looking to do, what what the uses in the mix, and I can't speak to that in great detail because because I, because I don't know. I think what's recognized is that, or what I can say is that they did show sort of what their initial plan was, you know, a year ago and and through through the work that they've done, they've I just, I I don't remember the numbers, but I remember looking at, you know, commercial square footage that originally was going down, and now I think it's it's actually increasing the number of housing units. I I don't know what that number is. So I think they're looking at a mixture of uses. They see the value, which I know, you know, several of you've heard me speak about the value of the employment that's there, the businesses, the commercial industrial nature and how important that is to to the city. And so I think that that's been understood. And, you know, also looking at which they've, you know, recognized from day one is, you know, the the vulnerability of the site due to sea level rise and and, you know, while they're looking at the site, the the city's perspective is the role that plays also in in the broader neighborhood for resiliency. I think what, where they are is they're committed to this process and that you know, the goal of that process is to listen and to learn for for the ownership group to be able to listen and learn from the community and for the community to listen and learn from from the owners as well. And to really try and come up with that shared shared vision, that shared set of goals that can be realized. And that's you can talk about uses, you can talk about some design goals, resiliency goals, open space goals. You know, that will come through this process. So I think there's, you know, there's been a lot of work that's done that they had done, and they understand, I think that presents a lot of good data for the city team in terms of that baseline, but you know, it's it's having that fuller, more complete conversation and engagement. And then at the end of the process of the six or seven months, there's that shared vision that then can present the 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 framework for subsequent zoning changes and 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 more work from there. Does that, does that address your your questions?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hapworth?
You. Thank you, Madam Chair. Not not being a member of the committee. I guess I just want to say that I think that our our this this move, if if we do it, is is one hundred percent reactive, and I will admit that. And I think that this is that we have, as a city council, have been dealing with development in a very reactive way for the last several years. You know, I think that clearly our our zoning has issues. I think that if if everything in our city complied to the underlying zoning, we wouldn't have a city that we would love living in. And I think that's a problem. And I think we, as a group, are the ones that fix that. And I think we need to fix that. And I'm open to to going down that path and 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 creating zoning that works for the city as far as affordability goes, as far as design goes. There's a lot that we can do there. But just because we're being reactive, and I would agree, I don't want to be this way, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing the right thing still, and we shouldn't be doing what's best for the people of Salem. And I think when we look at this, very well, they may not, they may decide that they don't want to go down this path, and they want to bring in a life sciences company, and they want just minimal housing on the site. That's certainly possible. But there's also a possibility that we have a neighborhood in the point that has seven hundred non-deed restricted units in it. It's mostly affordable. That neighborhood, this could be unnatural change that could happen all at once. And I don't think that neighborhoods shouldn't change. Neighborhoods are always in a state of change, and that's fine, but it should be incremental. This is a massive property, and this also highlights the issues that we have with large developments and what happens to them when they change hands. And I think that right now we're seeing something that could dramatically alter a neighborhood, could dramatically alter our tax base. I think there's a general agreement that the PUD may not be the right option for this developer. So I'm happy to close this, close this loophole down right now and do something we should have done previously, which is to to just address the YOD ordinance itself and define what that should look like. But I guess my question, just for maybe for Beth, is is there's been some question about this being spot zoning. What's your, I guess, your legal opinion on closing this loophole down and then and then dealing within the YOD ordinance to to add a housing option? Is that something that I think we as an elected body, this is our, this is our responsibility to deal with zoning? What's your legal opinion on what that, what that would look like or what the challenges there might be?
So back in September, I was asked to prepare a legal opinion. I believe when Attorney Quinn sent around his memorandum just yesterday, I believe it was, he attached that September memorandum. And in that memo, I talk about what is spot zoning and what is reverse spot zoning. So spot zoning is generally when you single out certain parcels for the benefit of the owner. And some of you might remember the universal steel case that we had where it was alleged that was spot zoning because it was going to benefit FWF. Well, in that case, the cases say that you could have zoning that's spot zoning so long as it's a benefit to the community, creates jobs, improves the property, so on and so forth. When you have reverse spot zoning is when you are taking something away from a property owner, you're singling out a certain area or a lot, and you're taking away a right that they have right now. So that's what arguably could have happened here. And if you look at the memorandum, I cite several cases where the court found that, as you have mentioned here, and and there's a case of national amusement in versus the city of Boston, when it was, the court found that it was reactionary. It was done to torpedo a particular development. And there's, there are other cases where there's been a challenge on a reverse spot zoning matter. And there was one in Cambridge, I believe it was, it was Bella Circle. And in that case, the city council had done a lot of work on this, on the, on the issue and changed the zoning after study, after a planning review, after testimony. So they had a lot of reports and study that supported the action they took in Bella Circle. So I would caution you that it could be ripe for, if there was a challenge, a reverse spot zoning challenge, if there were not those that that rationale and how it is tied to the zoning act. What's the reason for other than we don't want to have these units here? Again, you know, what's the justification? What's the rational basis for what you're doing?
Thank you. And I guess I would add just, you know, I'll, I'll hand it back over, but I I I would add, I guess, from my perspective, I don't know from from the perspective of others, but I I don't look at this as something that's the way the developer engages with the city, good or bad, I don't, I don't, I think that this is a loophole that needed to get closed down. Regardless, I think this is something that had things happen in a different order, the PUD and the and the YOD and the way that was written, I think it may, it may have been written differently. But yeah, I guess, from my perspective, it shouldn't, it couldn't be looked at as punitive, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a city solicitor, so. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Councilor, I noticed you had your.
Chair Riccardi. So I just, I I appreciate the applicant is now willing to open up dialogue with the community. However, and I'm going to keep this really short about the applicant. I think, you know, when it comes to community buy-in, over the last couple of years, there has been some, you know, questionable practices, let's just say. In one of the main buildings, the applicant was not renewing any leases for the upcoming years, nor were they really incentivizing businesses from coming in to Salem on a, on a long term basis. And I, and I, and I feel like their their approach now is also reactionary. But, you know, I just, I question, you know, the, you know, what what's going to happen to that neighborhood? When it comes to, you know, have they tried everything they can when it comes to fully, you know, utilizing the industrial use down in Shetland Park? You know, although I do believe that, you know, you know, when it comes to this issue and our past counselor, Turiel's decision to do this. While I, you know, reverse spot zoning, I I understand it's, you know, this could be considered this. But I really believe that it's up to our administration and our city councilors to create the ordinances for the benefit of our of our community and not our planning board. So when it comes to that, you know, this is why I think this is conflicting and I'll stop there. Thank you. It's funny.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My my comments, well, I have a comment and a question. First of all, there's been a lot of comments characterizing the the applicant, or rather, the owner of of the Shetland property and their intentions for the property and and how they have evolved over time and how they are interacting with folks now. I'll just say, I I have not received any communications from the applicant. I received communication from their, from their lawyer stating some, some clarifications about other opinions, but I haven't seen or heard from, from, from these folks in this meeting or others that I've attended, really, and that speaks to me more powerfully about their intentions and and really where their their heart is at in the matter. I think it's, it's pretty clear that they need to earn the trust, not only of the point neighborhood, but of the sort of city leadership as a whole, and I haven't seen them. So I just want to say that, but I also have a question which sort of follows on Counselor Hapworth's comments, and that is either for our solicitor or or our director of planning, and the question is, what properties either on the waterfront district or in the industrial zone might be considered analogous to Shetland, if any, as we consider whether or not this is spot zoning? I would assume in any particular challenge, the question would be, well, you know, what other properties might fall on the same disposition? fall on the same disposition? What are you doing with those? So I'm curious what we would consider analogous, since the the actual YOD really only applies to Shetland, and and whether any of those analogous properties have used the PUD process or not.
I can share, so the properties that are close in proximity that are industrial are the footprint site. Some property that's owned by some of the utilities off of Bridge Street, at the end of Bridge Street. You have MBTA property off of Cal, and you have other properties that are further away from the site. If you look at the city zoning map, you'll see they're in the bright gold properties. So I don't know if Tom wants to talk about what might be it similar amongst them, but the industrial properties are spread throughout the city. The closest, closest ones are owned by MBTA, New England Power, Footprint, and Shetland.
Yeah. I think, you know, Shetland is unique in terms of the the size of the property and and the the building footprint that exists there. You know, the the overlay could apply to more than that parcel. But, you know, it currently is only adopted for for that parcel. So I I think, you know, in terms of the size, there's a few that Beth mentioned that that are are large. You know, other industrial property that's in the city has smaller parcel sizes, smaller buildings or are undeveloped.
Thank you. I believe Counselor Terrell was next.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things to add to this is that we, the way the waterfront industrial overlay district was written, it was written and designed very much to be applicable to the Shetland property to expand the allowable uses. It also has a little postscript at the end of it that states that the minimum size of such a property, of a property on this overlay must be twenty-five acres, and that's more or less, as I read it, the tool by which it doesn't become spot zoning for a single parcel, because there are other parcels in the city that would be eligible for this and for this expanded and/or contracted uses. But, you know, the the enabling text of the YOD itself states very much that it's for encouraging commercial and industrial development and investment in the waterfront area that will generate employment and tax revenue. And I think that's fairly important to the discussion, because developing housing is, developing housing is taking out commercial industrial development, and it's taking, and it's not generating, it's generating tax revenue as residential, but it's also not generating employment. And I think those are fairly important things to keep in mind in considering what this overlay zone was designed to do and what its objective should be. So uses, to me, that should be allowed are uses, you know, just offhand, are uses that generate jobs. Building homes, as much as we need homes, it does replacing active commercial and industrial space. We have a lot of empty industrial space, former sites, mostly down on Blubber Hollow, that used to be, used to be factories, used to be businesses, and no longer are viable as such. And in those cases, converting those into housing is a worthy goal. You're taking sites that are otherwise fallow and building something useful to the city on them and solving some problems, but a city to really thrive needs two things. It needs place for P places for people to live, and it needs places for people to work. And by having, by eliminating a lot of square footage of building of structures where people can work, I think that's overall bad for the city. So that's where the city's interest, that's where economic interests come to play. You know, in looking at this and the question of zoning, this question of spot zoning, we're trying to act, you know, there's a reactivity to it, but we're trying to overall work in the benefit of the city as a whole by doing something like this, so. You know, that's that's my thought on it. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen?
Counselor Watson felt Marcelo would be for me.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, Madam Chair, not being a member of the committee. I want to go back to, I I feel like this conversation is is turning to, if we if we don't make this change, or if right, if we don't make this change, then the, there's a possibility that right away the owners are going to go out and they're going to full steam ahead to change all of the property into residential. And that's where I'm kind of having a hard time here, because I've not heard any plans, and and granted, I've not heard a whole lot in the way of plans yet. I had always heard that they, the the model of the Coming Center in Beverly was kind of the direction for this property, a mix of residential, business, restaurants, that kind of an approach, which is a mixed use, which is what it says in YOD is one of the one of the uses, is a mixed use for the property. So I I want to kind of take a step back and say, all right, so what other approvals are they going to need as owners of this property with support from the city officials and possibly the city council? And what I'm thinking of here is what kind of state permits are they going to need for their development moving ahead, where they're going to need, where the state's going to come back and say, City of Salem, Mayor's Department, or City Council, are, do you fully support this use of the property? Are they going to come back and want tiffs from us, which we, as a city council, have to vote on? Like, what are the other ways that we can say, you know what, you need to work with us, and you need to develop something here that's appropriate for the city, including jobs, including maintaining the the business atmosphere that's always been there historically? And and sure, maybe we could add some housing there, but so I'm trying to figure out if this is kind of, you know, if we don't vote to change this, and they're going to run full speed ahead on some crazy plan that nobody wants, and there, we've lost all control. Is that too broad a question?
What do you think, Mr. Daniel?
I can try to answer, and maybe Beth, if there's things you think of as well. I think, you know, for anything of, you know, there's there's threshold, the big caveat is there's a threshold for everything, depending on what they're looking to do, but if you're triggering going to the state, you're, you do need to file with MIPA, and so you've got that whole process with the state. There's Chapter ninety-one and licensing for that. The city is going to have to approve what those Chapter ninety-one plans are for it. There would be, depending, you know, it would trigger Mass Historic under the MIPA process, depending what they're looking to do there. The state's going to look to the Historical Commission for that. You know, there's the the infrastructure needs are things that are going to, you know, in terms of resiliency, but also just in terms of regular infrastructure, that's going to be coming to the city. There would be, you know, I I can't enumerate the specific permits and licenses from the state that would be needed, but that that I hope paints a broad stroke, and Beth, I don't know if anything pops to your mind as well in terms of.
You called out most important Chapter ninety-one, MIPA, the engineering review, our own permits with respect to wastewater and all of that. So I think you touched on the major ones.
Thank you. Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you, Madam Chair, not being a matter, a member of the committee. I think that I have a couple of comments and a question as well. I, what I I hear, I hear, I hear Counselor Marcelo's question, and I, and I want to sort of invert it a little bit, which is kind of like, I, let me start with, sorry, let me start with the with the comment. The intention of the owners of this property and what they want to do with this property is frankly separate from the issue that I agree with Counselor Hapworth's assessment, that this is a loophole issue in the ordinance, that, I mean, in the zoning that needs changing anyways. The owners of this property are not always going to be the owners of this property. They will not, you know, we will have other properties that will apply, that will fill, that, you know, like, as Counselor Terrell said, that fits, that fits into this zoning as well, and so I think we need to take a long-term, right, a long-term approach to this, which is there are a lot of potential possibilities that come with allowing the PUDs in this, and whether it's their intention or not, it becomes a lot more difficult for us to control long-term, right, for the city's input to to exist long-term. So so although I love that they're coming to the table, I love that it's going to be a mixed use that, you know, what, you know, without having seen the plans or knowing anything, but I love hearing that there's, that they're thinking of increasing commercial. But I, but we don't know that, right? And I think that if we were to commit as a group to saying, we, you know, we commit to developing some pathway to housing on this site, that we commit to, you know, we we say we we do value and agree that we need affordable housing in Salem, we need more housing in Salem, that there's, that there's opportunities to continue this conversation and and really address the nuances of this particular property, specifically as it relates to it, the abutting neighbors as well, which I think, in my opinion, there, there, if it were to flip tomorrow into fifteen hundred units, there, there would be, it would be an immediate detrimental effect on that, that community that exists there, our neighbors that live there now. So all of that is to say, if if we were to move forward with with a commitment to addressing the zoning, separate from a PUD, and we were to move this forward, right, with removing of it from the zoning, what do we, and this is kind of the inversion of Counselor Marcelo's question, what do we lose, right? Like, what what is, what do we lose control of, or what do we lose the opportunity for, or where do we, what do we sacrifice in sacrificing the PUD? Right? That's, that's the question, because I think we, I've heard from a number of counselors separately in 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 tonight's conversation that we want to make whatever the final plan is, be the best thing for Salem, and that that does include some level of housing, that includes, you know, commercial, that includes all of the things we've already discussed. So if we're all committed to doing that, then then why is the PUD the one, why is this the issue? Like, why not remove it and then get to the core of the matter and create something that could work long-term for the betterment of Salem? And that's an open question, although I would particularly address our city solicitor and Mr. Daniel with regards to, you know, what changes in in the opportunity for build there. Thanks.
So from a legal perspective, it just removes that use from the, from the ordinance. I think it's more of a of a of a planning tool that's available to the developer now. Tom can speak to that, but from a legal perspective, it just removes the, that ability for the developer to exercise that formal right.
And I I think that while the discussion is about housing, because that's been the the thing that they talked about last year, the the P, there are some commercial uses as well that aren't allowed in industrial, but, or under the YOD that the PUD allows. So for instance, supermarket and hotel, it's not a long list, but that's a couple, couple of them. So if, you know, if the PUD were eliminated, then in addition to housing, there's some, some commercial uses that wouldn't be allowed either for this until some other tool or zoning amendment were brought forward in the future.
Counselor Ricardi, if I may? Thank you. That's extremely helpful information, Tom, thank you. And I think that if we were to take this and look at it, and 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 I do not find the current language to include an exhaustive list already. I think that the way that it's written allows for an opportunity to further specify if we'd like to and get into what the real vision for a hugely impactful property is in Salem. So I don't know that if we were to remove PUD, anything's off the table by the sounds of it. In fact, it sounds like we have the opportunity for greater input, greater controls, and and a bit of a more nuanced and mindful process for that, for that specific location and large-scale locations that fit the 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 details moving forward, or the definition moving forward, thinking long-term. So that would be, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'll I'll call on Counselor Cohen in one second, and then I will make a few comments myself. And then we do have some members in the public with their hands raised, a few more now. And then I will, it's, we're up at an hour now, so I'll move on to them next. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. Of course, they came to the table, and that was a self-inflicted wound. I was at the first PNA meetings, as Counsel McCarthy was, and was impressed with their presentation. I invited them to CIRK. They came twice. I actually feel that their resiliency plans are more than sufficient. They're actually pretty impressive. They would raise the parking lot to the level of the berm, for example, which would protect Perkins and Pingree Streets. As 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 Tom said, the resiliency of this project is going to affect areas in the Point that are extremely vulnerable. This has been an imperfect process, and it's very complex, and I don't want to be jaded by my attitude about, you know, the developers. I think a letter from, you know, the developer's lawyer about, like, a fact sheet is not the same as what Counsel McLean was talking about. They've had a lot of opportunity to reach out to all of us. I have not heard from Sean or Patrick or any of the other people involved since Counselor, the former Counselor Terrell put up his his amendment. My view is that the PUD, you know, consequential things that have to be done through the state, like MIPA or whatever, are just not adequate. Because I think this body needs to take responsibility and maximize the amount of influence the city has. So I'm glad they're, you know, wanting to play patty cake with us now, but we do have very little options, very few options at making sure that the city is involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a few quick questions of, I guess, some comments, more so from what I've learned this evening. There's a lot going on, a lot of information still. I think it's nine, ten months later from when this was introduced, or nine months later. I I think my biggest concern i- is, of course, the reactionary piece of this, in that we're making an amendment without really, I feel, proper analysis or process behind it. Again, we've all said reactionary in closing a loophole, but it's a loophole that we have had in place and had created, and it's a tool that that we created, and if we don't like the tool, I feel we need to be fixing the tool and not using it as a reactionary item. I I disagree with what was just stated, and I do think that we have many options, and I guess, power rights as the city, that there are, it's been noted a few times, you know, the other additional pieces that do need to go through in order for any project to move forward. And we should be working with the tools that we do have, and if we don't like them, using our power to address that, and not, again, being reactionary, it's just, it's the, it's it's not a good planning process to do that, and it concerns me that we would be putting ourselves in not a good position if we did that. The 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 neighborhood and the city collaboration is definitely a big piece that's concerning me, because I also haven't seen it myself. But I I do feel that with conversations that I've had with with Tom, and it it sounds like it's working. working and, and moving forward, and that is hopeful. And of course, yes, it has been a forced hand for that conversation to happen, but, you know, we, not every project is, is going to be like that. And we need to really work and, and put some effort towards it, especially if all of us to, to be putting the pressure on there, to be making sure that those conversations happen. And, and we help create and, and mold the best possible project for, for what's down there. We really need to just listen and, and learn and, and figure out how to, how to get to that process without, I think, smashing all of the tools that we have. It just seems very, again, can say the word one more time, reactionary. On that note, I do see that we have four members in the public with their hands raised. I'm going to go down in order. I will note that we had two joint public hearings on this matter, so if we could keep our, our public comments fairly concise, so we don't go too long into the evening. I will unmute you if you can state your name and address for the record, and then provide your public comment. Harrison?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Um, my name's Harrison Shell. I live at 170 North Street in Salem.
Thank you.
So, um, I'll try to be a bit brief. I took a few notes along the way, so pardon me if it's a bit scatterbrained, but essentially, this is what I feel. I don't feel that this is the type of housing Salem needs. Frankly, based on what's been built in the last six years, I don't support much new development at all in Salem. Housing rental prices need to come down before new luxury housing's built. Also, I live by myself in a one-bedroom apartment. Typically, it's considered that, like, fourteen hundred dollars would be a low rent, but for one person, that's a lot. If I lived with a significant other, that would be seven hundred dollars, very manageable. I'd be able to save, I'd be able to plan for my future, I could prosper. The living single for the prices in Salem, which mine's low, typically, this would be like about a nineteen hundred dollar apartment, and it's nothing special, is insane. So I'll just keep going. I have some random thoughts, some of which are going to echo some of the points made by some of you, especially councillor Hapworth. Seems like a super smart guy. I would totally listen to that guy. I would also echo the points made additionally by councillor Watson felt. We definitely got to change that loophole right away. Also, I did a little bit of research. The previous owner of this complex was Robert Lappin, and coincidentally, that was actually a, a funder and provider of many Jewish philanthropy-based programs, one of which I partook in, which was a, a Jewish trip to Eastern Europe. In fact, I even visited Auschwitz. It was extremely impactful, and I actually wrote him a letter years ago, so when I saw that he was the previous owner, it kind of, it, it, it brought that back. I did hear a few years ago he passed away, which would make sense why the building was sold. I definitely think you got to close this loophole tonight to ensure the intentions, their intentions are beholden to your approval. I would say a hundred percent that it needs to take place. I've been at, also, I've been at many city meetings where approval for larger developers is railroaded through because the cities always feel that they quote-unquote "don't have too many options" if they move forward without them, AKA the developers. So the projects are approved, and the developers just essentially, in my opinion, just humor the councillor and make them feel like they're involved, which for the large part, they're not. We're also, we're talking about a proposed fourteen hundred and twenty-five unit residential building. These are all going to be luxury units, top-dollar places. There's also going to be a giant, not a Whole Foods, but kind of like it-type supermarket there. Go to Steve's Market. Steve's Market's cheaper than Market Bass. It's the best deal in town, and it's independently owned. There's no, you know, the supermarket desert. Steve's is right there. It's awesome. I love Steve's. And they're, you know, they're Salem people. So I don't get that at all. Also, another hotel, there's a Hampton Inn, there's new developments on Canal Street. There's the one next to the train station, which isn't that bad in the long run, but it was, it was proposed that it was a little crazier than that. But, um, you know what Salem really needs? Some development along where I live, along North Street. We don't even have a laundromat. We don't have a bank. We don't have a restaurant to go for, to dinner. There's no hotels over here. There's no developments over here. Come to North Street. I implore you, if you want some developing in Salem, North Street's your place. I mean, I've been trying to put a laundromat myself. I'm thinking about maybe investing some money, because, oh my God, I would do so well. It's, it's a desert over here. Let's talk about desert. Also, you know, the old courthouse is that huge building now. The Hampton Inn, oh my God, don't get me started. It's a real shame the city didn't personally purchase this property. I don't know what happened. But I have this feeling, in most Salem residents' minds, they're hoping that that Shetland Park, which is a bit of an eyesore, eventually turns into a mixed-use building where there's some affordable housing, it's not too crazy. The Cummings Center, the amount of apartments there, I looked it up, there's seventy-four units. Seventy-four units isn't even comparable to what they're planning over there. Essentially, I'm going to go back to what I originally said, which is that you got to close whatever loophole you need to tonight to ensure your intentions. Their intentions are beholden to your approval. Otherwise, they're, you're right. They're, they are going to just railroad this through, and they'll, they'll build whatever they want, and what they do want is fourteen hundred and twenty-five units, which, I'm in the real estate game myself, they knew that was going to be too big of a number. So when it ends up at like eleven hundred, twelve hundred, which is actually their intention, you're going to think like, oh, great, it's not fourteen hundred and twenty-five units. That's what they wanted to make all along, was probably about eleven hundred units. Mark my words. Anyway, I really, really appreciate your time. Thanks for listening to me. Be so scatterbrained, and I hope you all have a great evening. And I would love a little tiny bit of discussion of a couple of the points I made, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. My first point will be, there are two restaurants on North Street that you should check out, Leslie's and Dot and Ray's, great restaurants. And then I do want to also clarify one point of what that action-
Pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. Those are, those are breakfast places. I'm, I said, I said restaurant for dinner.
Oh, yeah, no, they, they both serve dinner, so. And they both get the references now. Yeah, they're doing Italian night there now. So, the, the action that we need to take this evening will be for, just to vote it out of committee, so we're not taking a final vote tonight. So I just wanted to make clarification on that, that the committee itself does not have to take, we're not taking the actual action tonight, but it will, if it's voted out of committee, go to council for actions tomorrow night. Next public comment that we have is former councillor Midor. You could state your name and address for the record, please.
Christine Midor, 25 O Street, number eight. Can you guys hear me? Yeah, you can hear me?
Sorry, yes.
Okay. Good to see you all. I'm wondering why I can't join you like councillor Turiel has, that I have to actually raise my hand. But I just want you guys to think about whether you're setting a precedent on zoning something out based on a mere intention of a property owner. Has, have we ever done that specifically as a city council? That based on some concept or idea that we immediately zone a use out? And I think that sets a very dangerous precedent. I cannot think of any large project that has happened permitted or built in Salem where if someone simply does not like the idea of the project, that they lobby their councillors to zone it out. That's just, it, it's mind-blowing to me that we're even having this conversation. And I also want you to think about how, you know, a lot of the, the comments I've heard tonight is centered on the specific property owner, the specific project, the, the specific property, but not really the interest of the neighborhood. You're zoning for a neighborhood, not for the developer, not for the project. So I really want to encourage you to listen to our city solicitor that if you are, and if you are really, and really want to disallow PUD, which is a, a tool that allows flexibility on this property, then you really have to open to the idea that you might be inviting a lawsuit. Because you are disallowing PUD based on the fact that you don't like to see housing on the site because of what the property owner's intent has, has shown. That is, that's, it's a really dangerous logic to follow. And lastly, before I have to go put my kids to bed, I don't see any upside in disallowing PUD in YOD. First of all, if you do disallow it, say, you know, councillor Watson felt was really on point earlier with the comments that if the property changes hand, and you no longer have the PUD as a tool, then you aren't, you're not able to review any projects that come to this property holistically. And we have the courthouse's project that, right next door to me by the train station, they have to go through PUD. Can you imagine if we did not have PUD available as a tool, how that project, a permitted, to really put into consideration the open si- the open space, the traffic circulation, the walkability, everything that goes to, into such a big project without PUD as a tool? You're really losing that flexibility and control that is, is built into the tool itself. So it's really not about the project, it's about the tool. And if you don't like the tool, fix the tool. And so I, I really want you guys to just not fixate on this intent of a developer has, and make a drastic decision in response to this intent. We don't have a project file. We don't know what, how many uses kind of come out of it. And your constituents deserve a lot more dialogue and thoughtful process than just a reactionary zoning proposal or zoning vote. Good night, everybody. Thanks for listening. Good to see you all.
Thank you, councillor Midor. Next up, we have Jeff Millar. I'm going to allow you to talk. If you could please state your name and address for-
Good evening. My name is Jeff Millar, and I live at 29 Boardman Street. I, I would echo a lot of what former councillor Midor just said. I think we are only here having this meeting tonight because the purchasers of the Shetland property made a ridiculous proposal for housing that was never going to make it through a permitting process in Salem. There's no way on earth our planning board was going to, was going to approve what they proposed. And I, I think I heard our city solicitor say earlier tonight that we are in, you know, at real risk of being accused of reverse spot zoning. And I think that she is incredibly correct when she says that. I don't think anybody thinks that the proposal that was originally made makes any sense for Salem, for that neighborhood at all. I heard former councillor Turiel say that the purpose of the, the YOD district was to make Shetland competitive with the Cummings property in Beverly. The Cummings property in Beverly has approved housing and built housing. I don't think that I, or probably any of you, want to see the housing that was built at Cummings built at Shetland. But I will say that one of the most difficult things about promoting the Shetland property is that it's hard to get to. And if there were a way to have housing on-site for people who worked on-site, it, it seems very much like a win-win to me. A yes vote on the proposal before you right now means that that cannot happen without further zoning changes. So I guess I wonder why we are throwing the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, when we could be looking at modifying zoning on this side in such a way that provides a little bit more control over housing, what type of housing could be there, versus blocking housing entirely because we don't like what the current owner of the potentially reverse, reverse-spot zoning property is proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Steve. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Steve Kapantus, 23 Wisteria Street, Salem, Mass. I think I got four comments I want to make. First, the addition of saying no PUD in the YOD does not eliminate this developer or this owner from pursuing the same avenues that he could without it. It just puts him in a position where he's going to have to work more closely with the city. Have him come in under a friendly 40B. Right? And it also eliminates, one of the things we gain by doing that, when there's a conflict between chapter ninety-one and our local zoning laws, if he doesn't have to, if he's going by rights, he can choose chapter ninety-one over our local zoning. This forces him to work with the city to keep to that height of forty-five feet and not go to something higher. Second, I hear a lot about this, this has been reactionary. Well, this has been in front of this body for, I think, six months now. I wouldn't call it reactionary, but the body's had a long time to think about this. Also, I want to talk about the owners a little bit, and everyone says that they're willing to communicate, they're willing to come to the board. I, I went to those three or four meetings. And we asked the developers for information that's available from going through requests for public information. We asked them for that. They refused to give it. We asked them to share their presentation. They refused to give it. Right? They're not very open with the public here, and they, they haven't been. Not at the meetings they had down at Shetland. I forget what my third point was. Maybe I'll remember it. I don't know. I'm, I'm on the road and don't have my notes. The fourth point was just that there, that there, there are other restaurants besides the ones that were mentioned. North House Pizza does have seating, as does Kings Rose Beef. And I hope that this, this committee tonight would vote to bring this to council on Thursday. Let's move on. It, you've had it for a while. Commit, the council will make the decision what they want to do with it on Thursday. Let's get it out of committee and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapantus. Former councillor Turiel, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So one point, you know, we, we have had in discussion the comparison to Cummings, and I think there's a very, very good comparison. Mr. Shell brought this up at one point, and Mr. Millar also brought some of this up. So at Cummings, they did wind up making some changes there in order to allow housing to be built on the site. And where they wound up building housing, they built a total of, as I understand, seventy-two units. And they built it on the periphery of the site, and they built it without, the only thing that was taken from the existing complex is a small portion of the west garage was attached to the new building, and some of those spaces, instead of being underutilized by Cummings' commercial tenants, they became deeded parking for the condos on-site. But other than that, and I think this is an important clarification, although Cummings did wind up putting commercial development on there, or sorry, residential development, and it's worked well, the, the units sold. People who, a lot of the people living in those, I believe, are generally people working in the complex, so it's a success. But they only built seventy-two units, and those seventy-two units were additive to the existing commercial uses on the site. They didn't replace any of those commercial uses. None of the commercial buildings were taken down or relocated or changed at all in order to make that residential usage possible. And by extension, if hypothetically, the proposal that had initially been floated was to take the back corner of the site by the number four building, the site closest to Palmer Cove Yacht Club, and to build a residential building there, of, you know, a four- or five-story residential building, I don't think it would have generated anywhere near the feedback and issues that, what they came to the state with initially came up with. Just also to let you guys know, so I sat in on a meeting that they had that was supposed to be for principals only, and I was- only, and I found out about it, and I went in there and basically pretty much hid to the side and just sort of tried to be ignored as best as possible. But I also did listen to what they were, what, where their proposal was at at that point and what they were working towards. On the proposal that, as it currently stands, from what I have seen, and I haven't seen anything that replaces it, is to go down to now approximately 900 units over four buildings that would be built on the site where the current one-story four building is. That's the site that the pantry uses, that the gym is in, that the bakery is in, and Triangle and all those businesses. They would take that building down and replace it largely with four residential units totaling approximately 900 units. They would also relocate Salem Academy to a purpose-built building that would be on the back of the lot adjacent to the edge of the point behind where that number four building is. They would take the existing building that Salem Academy is in, take that down and build a new multi-story commercial building that they would seek to relocate some of the tenants into potentially. So that would be the approximate load. Now, that may have changed some and they may be working with that further. That's the most recent draft that I saw. And I haven't seen anything since then. That was back in, I believe, October that I saw that. But so you're still talking about a scale that's large and disruptive and still introduces a really large number of units into a neighborhood. So there's still a lot of fundamental issues, and I would much rather see them, the owners of Shetland forced into a process where they have to work very closely with the city in order to get that support that would let them move forward. I, you know, the difference to me is they would have, they have certain things that they could file to do now by right, and those could get whittled back in the planning and permitting process. But they can't get fundamentally changed. They, the initiative lies with the owner of the property, not with the city at that point. And this is a situation, I guess, lastly with this, this is a situation where we haven't had a comparable thing that we could, we could use as an example here. We've had a lot of redevelopment. Some of them have been fairly large in scale. We haven't had anything that's this massive a complex involved, and we've never had a site that has had a zoning ordinance set up specifically to cover that site before. That, that other changes that have been made have been in zones that we already have defined that are already part of existing properties or existing definitions. We, we've never done this independent with a zone that just literally the Wyod pretty much exists independent of everything else. So it's sort of a very unique situation for us, and there's no property this large in Salem. So anyway, thank you. We'll get to anybody else now.
Thank you, Josh. Tom, if you could maybe clarify, I feel like a lot of numbers and ideas and plans have been thrown out tonight about different projects, but where, in your eyes, where where does everything stand right now? Like, what, what, what's the project that a few different members have alluded to here? And, and what would be, you know, the process for moving forward, say, on that? If, if, is anything, has anything been submitted, or if you can kind of maybe fill me in on where we, where we, along with the owner, stand?
Yeah, so the, I think the plan that Counselor Turiel is referencing is, is what I saw recently. He had more details on it than I, I did, but I, you know, the school was a component of that. But there's nothing, there's nothing filed. They, they are, I think, you know, they've spent time sort of iterating, you know, with, with some input that they've had. I think what we're talking about is starting, starting fresh. It's, excuse me, as I said earlier, what we have, what our consultant team will have the benefit of is just kind of the baseline data, the square footages of the properties, you know, the CAD drawing files, the, you know, jurisdictional lines for chapter 91, those types of things, that baseline data. But it's starting the process to engage with the community, find out what the community's hoping to accomplish, what the concerns are, what are the, what are the must haves, you know? Clearly, there's rules and regulations and laws that need to be complied with, concerns about, you know, resiliency. What are some of the aspirational things that folks would like to see? What is the owner see from, you know, their needs, their must haves and their goals, and how do we come up with, with a vision that then can be supported? You know, I, I imagine that, you know, what's been talked about is, you know, mixed use. That's, I think, broad brush, but you know, what's within that? And I can't speak to that. That's not, none of that's been developed yet because the process hasn't happened yet. So how much housing, what types of commercial uses might be focused? You know, design, the connectivity, connections to the water, open space. All those types of things would come through this process that would be getting underway. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Domingo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad I, I was recognized. I tried to place my hand in a different way. But anyway, I'm happy to hear the conversation. I think we hear a lot of good things, but I just want to make sure that we continue the conversation and make sure that we understand that the neighborhood that we are talking about is more vulnerable one. Most of these cases, they are not getting, they are not really involved. They don't really know exactly what's going on. I just wanted to make sure that any process we choose to go through, we engage the community in a very, very strong way. Because I think what we're talking about was going to happen in that neighborhood is perceived is going to be very impacted by neighborhood. So my concern as a city elected official is that we really engage the community, that the owner of the Shetland Park, whatever decisions been made in there, we really, really come to the bottom line that what we had allowed to happen in there do not destroy the character of that neighborhood. I repeat myself, that neighborhood is one of the most vulnerable and is most condensed and dense community that we have in Salem. Even though the impact going to be directed to them, I think that we are, it will also impact the whole city in a very dramatic way. So I'm glad that the conversation started over again. I was trying to get involved in the process at the beginning, but I agree with most of the people who from the public that express themselves on the intention of the owner not to communicate well with the community, not, not sharing the information that need to be shared with the whole entire community in order for the community to be informed. And with as elected official, I think we have a duty to make sure that the community get the information or request the information from the owner. So everybody have information when decisions come through. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Domingo. My apologies if I missed your hand earlier. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. I just have a quick question. Hopefully, Mr. Daniel can answer it. If not, maybe Josh, Counsel, former Counselatorial can. Of these units that are being iterated, let's say 900, are they rental or condos?
Yeah, so, so I, I really don't know what model they've, we haven't had any conversations like that. I mean, the, just to, just to clarify, I mean, our conversations have been about the scope of work to be performed. It hasn't been looking at the work that they've done because that really, to some extent, doesn't matter because we're starting anew. So I didn't know that, that, you know, that it was at 900 units in the last plan. So I can't. I, I think that that's, you know, what they're understanding is that they need to reengage and rethink. You know, we have the benefit of that, that baseline work, but, you know, needing to, to find out what, you know, what makes sense, because I think they understand that what they were initially talking about, you know, doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Counselor Presnisky?
Madam Chair, I think it comes down simply to the decision of who's going to hold the better hand by the decision that we make? Is it going to be the city or is it going to be the developers? And my question to Tom Daniels is our planning board voted eight to one not to adopt the amendment. So Tom, could you explain the crux of that conversation as to why the planning board so overwhelmingly did not vote to adopt the amendment? Thank you.
Excuse me, I, I think that the I was not at the meeting where it was discussed, but in talking with colleagues and in the minutes, I think the the sense is the, you know, it's not the, the practice to sort of along the lines, I think, of what Counselor Mador, former Counselor Mador was saying that you know, typically a zoning change is based in, in a study and a process that's led to that, that change. I think the planning board also operates independently and is adept at managing PUDs, special permit processes and evaluating them. It is a special permit. And so I think they, they feel express some confidence in knowing how to manage that process. But I think it was more reservations about, you know, this is, this isn't how you know, a zoning amendment typically is, is connected or the process to get there.
Your opinion, the the city has a little bit more say or more authority as to what's going to happen with the property than the developers, the amendment is not adopted. Black and white.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear the first part of what you said.
So it gives the city more control over what is going to be put there and not put there if we remove the PDU's? Is that what you're saying?
So
I don't mean to put you on the, on the spot.
No, I'm, if I, I, I'm, I think what you're asking is if the PUD is removed, does that give the city more or less control? Is that your question? Yeah. So if the PUD is removed, it, it is a restriction on what the owner can apply for. And, you know, under, like, if there is no subsequent process, they have fewer uses that they can consider. You know, assuming that, you know, the process that I described earlier, that that proceeds, then there will be, you know, again, the goal of having a shared vision that would be the basis for a subsequent zoning amendment. So you know, in that interim period between now and that conclusion and that subsequent zoning filing, they would have fewer uses that they could pursue.
Working with the city could be modified to the betterment of the community.
In a future, yes, in a future, yeah, at the conclusion of that process.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Watsonville?
In the interest of the flow of this conversation, I would yield to the city solicitor on this one, but is it okay if I leave my hand up? Thanks.
I didn't notice that.
I, I just wanted to add that. So as far as the process goes, you're up against the deadline, which means, so after the close of the public hearing, you have 90 days in which to vote. So you would have to take this up tomorrow night, the first passage and then second passage in February. If the council doesn't take any action on this, you're past the 90 days. You could, if you still wanted to massage this, the Wyod, and put more controls in there with respect to the number of units and the percentage of units or whatever that might be, you would, the process would be that you would again take that proposed amendment and go stop the process again. Right? I just wanted to put that out there that it's not just a yes or no. You could, you know, let it pass the 90 days and then you could refresh it with some, some additional changes to that table, if that's what you might be finding.
Thank you. Beth, could you also fill us in on the two? I mean, obviously, if it does go to council and it is voted to be enacted, it's enacted. If it goes to council and it's voted to not, not be amended, I guess I should say. Then what happens then?
If it's adopted, the second passage, then that, then it's adopted. But if it's not, if it gets voted down, because the planning board didn't recommend it, you have a two-year, under chapter 48, a two-year prohibition from bringing back that very same amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Watsonville?
Thank you, Madam Chair, not being a member of the committee. And thank you to Tom and, and Beth for this very helpful, specific commentary. I do want to add a couple of things. I, I think that, you know, to the city solicitor's point just now, I, I would say that I, I don't believe it is the intention of the body to, to sort of spot zone out the use or any specific use. I think we, I think that what I've heard tonight is that there is a, we all kind of want to make this better, right, in some way, shape or form, and get to a place that makes sense. I'm still not convinced that leaving the PUD in is the right course. I, I, but I like that we have, it sounds like there are some options on the table to, to to address that. One of the pieces of tonight's conversation I just feel like I need to address is that the sense of that this is a, being a reactionary response. It may have been in its origination, but it's not now. I think, you know, I'm not coming at this as a brand new city counselor with a knee-jerk reaction response to what was proposed a year ago. So I would love if, if the, if we could change that, shift that part of the conversation, because I do, I do think that, that whether it was a year ago or tomorrow, I, I stand firm that, that I think that there's a better way to do this. And that is not a reaction, right? I think that, that the blanket PUD in this instance is problematic. And so I would love for us to just focus on like fixing that rather than assessing this as a reactionary, like that, that sort of message that keeps getting repeated is becoming a little bit of a tool, and it's not, I don't find it productive. So for my part, and this is not reactionary, right? I'm, I'm new. I'm doing my homework. I'm in it for Salem. So we have to move on from that. Um, I do think that I guess my question is, is there a way? You know, if, if there is a real concern that we're going to get sued between, you know, if we were to, if we were to amend this, and we were going to get sued between now and whatever the next zoning filing might be, you know, towards getting to this better end goal, what do we need to do from a timing perspective? I guess this is a question for the solicitor, to ensure that the intent to make this work is present, regardless of the vote that may take place, you know, the second passage in February, if we were to, if we were to move forward with removing PUDs?
So I had a bit of a conversation with Counselor Ricardi this afternoon. And I don't know, Counselor Ricardi, if this is something we might want to talk about, but perhaps there is a couple of ways we could do it. One of the ways is the way I just described, you know, let it sort of go past the 90 days and start it again and amend it how you, how you see fit. Or maybe there's a memorandum of agreement with the property owner. And we had talked about memorializing the commitment for the funding for the study. We had talked about memorializing the commitment for the funding for the study. And perhaps there are other things that could be brought into that. So they're on pause. We have an agreement there on pause. We do the study. And then this body with the planners can work on, on what. What, what the proper number of units might be or the percentage. No, I'm not a planner. I don't know, but. Is that what you're thinking? Something along those lines, maybe?
Yeah, something that is sort of that gap fill, right? That says that the intention of the body is to move it forward in a way that allows, you know, housing that allows, you know, hotels or grocery stores. If that's what we would like, if that's what we're after, but enables us as a, as a body to, to have additional input and additional controls. For a long term, right? Protecting that site for a long term from whoever, whatever's coming next for sure, but whatever the future ownership looks like down the line. So if there is a way to just make sure. We're protected with the best of intent moving forward with this in front of us. And that there's no reactionary response, you know, if we were to have a second passage, it's helpful to know exactly what all the avenues are. So I appreciate that. That's, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, Attorney Quinn is, is in the audience. I don't know if he wants to comment on that, but. Just, just so you know.
Yes, thanks. And to follow up on that, we did have a conversation this afternoon and also with, with, with Tom. In confirming or finding a way to confirm the. The partnership going forward to, to give us a little bit of. Sanity check there that the partnership is real, that the willingness to work is real and that we need to, you know, let that process flush out. I will just comment, I think I am, I am continuing to use the word reactionary both in my head and out loud because. This, this was reactionary and even though the time has passed, it's still reactionary because it's, it's, it's an action related. To a specific action. So we're specifically reacting to the submission, the submission of the number of housing units. That were requested at the site. And there was no further study done. There was no further analysis done. And those are the items that need to be in, in my mind, done in order to, to make zoning amendments. In a, in a informed planning process in, in the correct way. I highly recommend we all kind of pour over the city solicitor's letter that was included in the email that was sent out this afternoon. Again. The last couple of pages there, I feel like that's really, has a lot of details here as to why. I know that that word is, is continuing to kind of be, be in my mind and in my back burner. I think I saw a few new hands go up. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Riccardi. I just have a question. For a city solicitor to clarify. And I'm just going to try to express it because this is going to involve the vote tonight. And if you could confirm whether this is true or not. So if we vote to refer this to the council tomorrow. And it fails, then we cannot act on this again for two years. If we let it pass and not go to the council tomorrow. We have an opportunity even immediately to resubmit this with. Some provisions that might be. Agreeable. Is that true?
That's true. I mean, it could be referred out to the council. Council McCarthy might speak to this better on procedurally how that's happened in the past. But if the council does not take a vote. And vote it down. Then yes, you could continue the dialogue and bring it back up and advertise it again and. You know. Maybe have some further changes to it with respect to the housing percentage and so forth.
But if we. If it goes in front of the council tomorrow and the council votes it down, then we cannot act on it for two years.
On that specific zoning amendment, it would have to be substantially different. So that same amendment? No, it's two years, the end.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to note that Attorney Quinn has raised his hand in the audience. So if we're all okay with. Allowing him to, to speak for a moment and then we'll come back to the members of the committee unless if anybody would like to have a specific question for. For Attorney Quinn before, no, okay. Attorney Quinn, I'm going to allow you to talk if you could reset your name and address.
Hi, I'm just unmuting. Hi, Attorney Bill Quinn, can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Bill Quinn, Bill Quinn. I've watched a debate. It's a very interesting and intellectual discussion, really. I, I grew up in Salem. I am for Salem. Okay, I have clients, but. Bill Tinty and I have worked for this, a lot of clients and what we do is try and. Help make things better for Salem, which is always best for our own clients. I can't talk about details of the project because I don't know. My understanding basically is that. Once the developer understood the strong reaction and regulatory system in Salem and organization of our neighborhoods. They pretty much dropped the idea of. High tower luxury condos along the ocean as a major element of this project and have been working. I think very actively with community groups, neighborhood groups. To try and gauge better the needs of the community. But that process has just really died out in the last couple of months. Not, not totally, but because. The mayor offered to try to organize an overseeing consulting function. That we would all try to work through to come up for something as best as possible for Salem. Most of our efforts have been coordinating the transfer of information to the consultant. Negotiating with the city about the payment of the consultant. And, you know, with the election season and everything the last few months. From a legal and at least everything kind of stopped until after you were all sworn in. So we're just getting going again. Locally, although the developer's probably been doing more than I'm aware of. But we're committed to the process, okay? And we've told our clients, they have to be committed to the process if they want success in Salem, because if we can't convince. The city, the mayor, the city council and the planners that we have. A great project for the city, not just for ourselves. There's no hope of getting it approved. All right, it's basically that simple. And I think our clients have heard the message. They are cooperating with the consultants who they have no control over whatsoever, except giving them baseline information and. Paying on behalf of the city. And our next several months will be involved in cooperating with the consultants while they come to the community to do their own work to gauge the needs. Of the citizens. That's how I understand the process is going to go forward. The issue of taking one zoning right away from one developer. Whether it's spot zoning or not, I've written memos that it is, I believe it is, but it's, we don't want to be involved in a legal controversy with the city. We want to be working with the city. To try and fashion a project that could be very exciting for the community in terms of waterfront access. Public waterfront access throughout our property, open space access. For recreation and, and activities by the neighborhood, not just the residents of Shetland Park. Sidewalks, street access being improved throughout the neighborhood to serve both the neighborhood and our project. You know, there's a plethora of important things that we can do for the community if we're in a cooperative situation. Working with the community. And again, that's what we want to do. We will be entering into agreements of understanding with the city regarding the, the developer. And I think we would entertain any reasonable request by the city to broaden that agreement to talk about parameters of the project. I don't know how broad or what parameters, but we're open to discussions about anything. Tonight's vote is, it seems simple, take something away from us and then you have more control. I honestly don't think that is the case. Nothing that you would object to of a size or scale can occur at Shetland. Without the city supporting it and the city council voting to approve all the zoning. Changes that would be necessary to implement such a large project. PUD housing is one of many tools the city might want to use both throughout the project or in spots of the project. And, you know, the developer. Reaction is if we're going to work with the city, why are they trying to take something away from us? It's, it's not a good way to start a cooperative. Venture. But despite whatever you do, I'm sure we will make every effort to try and work with the city. But. You know, we don't want you to take action against us because my clients foolishly. Publicized and filed some high rise plans with the state, which they withdrew a date later when the mayor. Read them the riot act and made them realize what the realities in Salem really were. So I'd ask you to foster the cooperative situation which we're building. And if you want to change the PUD in some ways that we can discuss, I'm open and we're open to discussing them. But I really think that the, the way to go for the community's sake is. Don't punish the developer for a bad idea. Work with them on great ideas. Keeping control of the process, which the mayor has certainly stepped up to do. And knowing that any significant or high rise project at Shetland, whether it's all residential or commercial or whatever. Has got to get the approval of virtually all the regulators and all the officials in the city. So thank you for your time. It's been a very interesting discussion to listen to and I certainly sympathize and. Admire the public service aspects of your comments and your service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Quinn. We have. Yeah, four entries. I'm sorry, did not see the order in which they went up. So I'm going to go on my screen, Counselor Marshall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, to go back to what Counselor Watsonville had said. And just make it clear that as, as Chair Riccardi had said, reactionary zoning isn't, isn't meant as a slight. On how much work anyone has done. We've all done a ton of work here. But there was no process. And if you look back at, for instance, how we went through the process of zoning changes for accessory dwelling units. That was a process, right? We worked with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. We worked with, with, with groups within the city. We talked to, to residents. We had meetings about. Accessory dwelling units and what that would mean to change the zoning to allow for it. It was a process that we followed. It was studying what, what ADUs would bring for the city, how it would help our residents. And, and what that zoning change meant. This had none of that. This was done to slow things down and to bring the developer to the table and we've done that. Just, just the, just bringing it up as a change. And so that's where we're saying that, that this is reactionary zoning. It, it has nothing to do with how much work people have done to understand what's going on. We've all, we've all done that. And I know as new counselors, this is a big thing to step into. It's been a big thing for the past. Oh, I don't know, since the summer last year when all of this started. So I just want to make sure that people are clear with, with that idea of reactionary zoning. And it is, it is reactionary zoning because we haven't assessed how this change would affect that property. And, you know, I, I have issues with some, some things that people have said, for instance, the loophole and this being a loophole. It's not clear to me that this is a loophole. Just because you say it is, it doesn't mean it is. I'm not sure what that even means. So I, I'm, I just want to make sure that, that we're clear on that, that it's not a slight. It's not meant to put anyone down or anything down. It's just. That was the process that was done for this. So that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, especially not being a member of the committee. Is, I appreciate the time and, and expertise everyone has expressed tonight. And thank you, Tom and, and Beth for, for being here and all the, all the great information. I think one thing that, that makes it just uncomfortable to keep the PUD in place is. The lack of specifics, like I'm really happy to hear, you know, they want, the developer wants more of a collaborative effort. With the city and with the community to move forward. I was on the meetings that they had in Shetland. I did attend the meetings they had in Shetland Park. And, you know, there, there were some good ideas. It's just, it's, it's just a little challenging to not want to keep an extra safeguard in place. When, you know, the, the intention sounds great. They're coming to the table, but. It's just the complete lack of specifics when, you know, are they condos? Or, you know, apartments, you know, there's, there's vagueness in any kind of ballpark for numbers. Except the 900 that we heard that I, you know, I, I, you know, I'm not sure. I don't remember hearing that in, in the meetings I attended. So the idea that was expressed of, you know, maybe a memorandum of agreement or. Working on, you know, more specifics and safeguards with what is in place. So it's more of a respectful process to Counselor Masillo's, you know, point. That we do, that more due diligence is done. But I, I do think that's what makes everyone uncomfortable is, you know, like I said. The, the lack of specific, any kind of specific information. Instead of, you know, just like a well meaning path forward, just, you know, some more concrete. You know, safeguards and limitations. And if there's more of a respectful way to, to get those in place. Then I would welcome that. Like I said, the idea of. You know, some kind of more formal agreement that we have, you know. An outside, you know, what is it, consultant involved or, you know, taking more of a deep dive. Into what is in place now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hepworth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we're all, I think we're all saying the same things here. I think that ultimately. We just want to get this right. And I think that not, not getting this right just for this specific development, but. 20 years from now, we could be looking at another person buying this property for a use that we couldn't even imagine today. We need to get this right now and not worry about the intentions of the developer or how the developer is engaged with. With the city council or with the neighbors, like, great, if they, if they, if they engage, then, then great. If they don't. This is not a punitive measure. This is us looking at our zoning and saying, is this right? Is this? I think we all agree that this is not, that, that the, the PUD as it's written right now is not necessarily right for this. Property, at least could be problematic for this property. I would be open to, to, to resubmitting this. With a more well thought out, you know, removing the PUD and then potentially. Defining what we want to see around housing. I just want to circle back to something that Beth said maybe 20 minutes ago or so. I guess my, my concern is I want to make sure we're holding on to the ball. And I, I don't doubt the intentions of, of prime. And I, I, I think that, but I just want to make sure that we're doing. The most responsible thing possible here and if, and, and. Ensure that where we're at right now. So let's say we don't take any action on this tomorrow. It dot, essentially it will die. But if we were to resubmit it for the next council meeting. With some well thought out language around what that housing should look like. Would we be, would the clock have run out at that point? I'm just curious, worst case scenario. I don't think this is going to happen. Let's say that the developer decides to, to, to submit something in that. Time period. When does the clock run out? I guess that's my, that's my question.
So if you don't take any action by February 14th, that would mean both passages by February 14th. Then your 90 days is passed. I believe it's the 14th. And then you stop and no, you would stop and no.
Okay. So our next council meeting after this is the 10th, correct? I think that's, that's correct. Okay, I, I mean. I guess open to, to hearing what others have to say. I'm, I. I don't support seeing a PUD on, on this location and just sort of being like, I hope, I, I'm hoping for the best here. Let's go through the process. I support removing this, this PUD as an option and, and doing something better and more well thought out. But open to, to changing how we do that and what, what. What, you know, how that all happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hepworth. Counselor Turiel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if I have screen sharing enabled, but I just did some digging. And the meeting that I went, that I attended was on. And the meeting that I went that I attended was on November tenth, and I have. A photo that I took at the time that I will share with everybody. And let's see. You guys should be able to see that, I think. Can everybody see that? So that's the complex as it would be reimagined. This building down here would be made from the remnants of the existing buildings that are there. And they were envisioning that as a food hall. This is the existing current garage to orient you all. This is the area where the. Salem Academy currently is, and this is the parking lot adjacent to it. This is where the new commercial building would be. This is the new Salem Academy location.
Councillor Turiel, I'm sorry, can I pause you for a second? Are you showing plans from like a neighborhood meeting that they shared?
This is from a, this is from a tense meeting on that they had on November tenth.
Okay.
That I was in attendance at.
Okay. I don't I don't know if we necessarily need to go down. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I didn't want to go through all the gory details, but this is essentially the site plan envisioned at the current time.
The one from November, yes. So and it sounds like our next steps are hopefully getting into that. Memoriam of understanding with the developer and the consultant.
And just one last thing, this is roughly the location of the current. Commercial for number four building. So just so everybody knows what's where.
Thank you. Councillor Verella.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Riccardi. I would like to make a motion to keep this matter in committee. I think there's a. Other steps we can take to address this issue, so I'd like to move to that. Thank you.
A second.
Councillor Verella moves to keep the matter in committee. Sorry, can you do a paper? Second, if I counsel Dominguez, we'll have some discussion on that. Any discussion, councillor Verella?
Honestly, I I know Bob had his hand up. If you'd like to say anything.
I had my hand up just basically to state. There's three actions in front of you tonight. Leave it in committee, which was just made. We send it to committee, send it to the full council with no recommendation, send it to the full council with a positive or negative recommendation. But all that being said. Really have to, it's been an interesting discussion, but. And I agree with some, I have questions about other parts of it, but. I will say there's a lot of information out there that needs to be had. They, and I can't speak for the owners and would nor would I ever speak for the owners because. The owners have their own voice and that's their voice. And what plans or what I've seen different iterations of the plans over time, I don't know currently what they're thinking. Because there are none at the table. So to have a to have a discussion about exactly what they're proposing. They've proposed something, then they've come back and now they've heard this, and then that's how proposals work, I guess. But specifically with regards to what the actions are tonight is what was just motioned. Or send it back to the committee and then what Beth spoke about earlier would be. If it ends up in front of the full city council and ends up in a vote, and if certain actions are taken, then. It triggers a whole bunch of different other things, which. We could go, we could talk about it length, but right now there's already a motion on the floor, so I was just going to focus everyone back on the motions that's in front of us because the. Mattering committee is to refer this matter back or to keep it in committee and get more information, which in effect would. Potentially time it out because of the way you'd have to schedule a special meeting. And I believe I'd have to talk to the city clerk tomorrow. Between first and second passages, it requires X amount of time. I think it's a week because it has to be publicized. So. There are still more, still more options, but that would kind of limit you what you could do, but. I'm not a member of the committee. I'll leave it to the committee. I'm just put out the options. That's all.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Yeah, so the the matter and the or the motion on the floor, the councillor Verella, it was one of those options that you mentioned for the matter to remain in committee seconded by councillor Dominguez. The the to, so we do have a meeting tomorrow and then we have a meeting scheduled for the tenth. If a special meeting had to be held as well, that would be the the week. A week prior to the. Meeting on the tenth, I guess. I did want to make one other comment. I I support keeping this in committee. Mostly be, this has been a very eye-opening conversation tonight. I think a lot of good information has been shared. I think a lot of things have been said that I. I agree with, but there are also things that have been said that I don't necessarily agree with, just because I don't have enough. Data or information behind there to support that. So statements such as like a putt is not right. Why? Like, I I don't know what information is there to prove that that's not right. Like, yes, perhaps the number of housing units that can be granted because of it are not right. But to flat out remove that and that entire process that the planning board owns and and all of that behind it, like, I. I don't think we need to throw, I think that the term used for the baby out with the bathwater is is necessary there. So it it, I guess I'm just getting back to the point that this is ultra complicated, and I don't think we're necessarily at the. The finite correct answer yet. So perhaps keeping this in committee as opposed to. Making a finite decision either way will continues to kind of keep the ball in our court per se and allow us to really. If needed, massage this to to get this to a better place. Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Riccardi. I just have a question before we vote on councillor Verilla's. Motion. If we leave it in committee. Do we have a specified amount of time to make revisions to it, which it looks like councillor McCarthy is nodding his head?
I miss councillor, I don't know which way he nodded his head, but. To make revisions to this specific matter, I mean, if if we keep it in committee, we could make revisions and start the process all over again, I think, is the gist of where it would need to go. So. Making revisions would be changing what the amendment is, which would mean we would need. Joint public hearing referral to the planning board because revisions mean it's something different, so.
Right, but that we would have to do. If, according to solicitor. If we develop a new amendment, we would have to go through that process as well. So. In my mind, leaving it in committee. Is not going to get us to that place where we have a better revised amendment. It would be better to let this thing. Expire and start all over again. And I'm going to, I'm going to defer to councillor McCarthy because I'm just talking about procedure right now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Leaving in committee will basically. Unless someone wants to call a special meeting, we'll let the, in your words, let the matter expire. And then someone just needs to reintroduce something. In the next two weeks, someone needs to bring bring in something. Relative to what they think will help the discussion. And once that, once that balls in the, once that ball's in play. Then the ball's in play. And then that will also then that could be, it also could be looped in and worked in with the. Work that the working group is going to do with an engagement of the new owners. But. Leaving a committee is going to leave it in committee and then then it's going to time itself out. And then if it times itself out, then you need to bring something. Bring something to the floor. That would address your concerns and then also address the engagement portion of it, portion of it. And I'm sure that. If myself or someone else wanted to do that, they could have that conversation with the city solicitor to figure out what the language and loop Tom in on that as well to come up with a. How to move this from committee and then it's some move it back into committee. And then engage the stakeholders and then refer the matter, then refer the matter back out to. The planning board in the city council for a joint public hearing to amend any zoning that would need to be amended to. Either. Whatever comes out of the meetings. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Any other questions from the committee in regards to the motion on the floor? Now, so the motion on the floor moved by councillor Verella, seconded by councillor Dominguez for the matter to remain in committee. Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councillor Presnisky?
Yes.
Councillor Verella?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So at five to one, I'm sorry, five to zero, matter will. Remain in committee. Councillor Cohen, did you raise your hand?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second, I'm the councillor Verella. Before we adjourn, I would just like to thank everyone for the conversations tonight. Let it go past nine o'clock, but it was a really good conversation. Didn't want to, didn't want to stop it. And. Second all of the meeting, the second all the meeting of the year where every member of the council has attended. So I just want to definitely say thank you for your.
Such a long meeting. I feel like I never left.
And even former councillors have attended. So thank you all so much for the great respectful conversations we've had this evening. Definitely a tough first item to to work through as a council. So I appreciate that we're we're working and trying to get there. And on that note, I will say goodnight to everyone. Oh, wait, sorry, roll call vote for, I always miss that one. Councillor Dominguez didn't remind me. Councillor Cohen?
Yep.
Councillor Presnisky? Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councillor Verella?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so a matter of five to zero, move to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.